Was that battery pack?
That battery pack you sold us on.
Oh, yeah.
It's the only one that works now in my old phone.
You could get a new phone. They've been making them for the last decade.
No, I don't think they have. There's so much work stuff on there I'd rather.
Oh, see, I had no work stuff on my personal phone. They give me a work phone for that.
Oh.
That's all. I keep all that over there.
All that, that gun, MFAs?
That's all. We use, we use a Okta. So, we get logged in. We have single sign-on for almost everything. But anything that needs a code, pull up Okta on our, either on our laptop or on our cellphone. Gives us a code and that's it.
Makes it easy.
Yep.
Alright, go ahead and get started. You don't need an official call to order. Barbara, you wanna know who's here just for the record? We need to take attendance and all that stuff.
Okay.
Just in case someone comes along and asks, "Hey, who was that to workshop?" We can say.
Okay.
Okay, so...
As a minimum during the last round of the workshop, I would like some discussion as perceived of classifying those corridors and something, particularly like Lucky Drive and the building drive. We know the nature of the law and we want to be residential, so we're not going to pursue that with change. Starting with actually signs and property, I don't think some of this annexed area. So, we're also gonna look at the model code and what it says prior to the program of future. And I figure if we need to, we're actually kind of looking at the map. See if there's anything that we want to start preliminarily assigning some news out into. Basically spitballing stuff to see what's on there and see where we'll go with that. However, like I said, looking for equal handouts around the basin offering. The first column is the UDO's model code and their specifications, right, the code hold zone. And then the same two columns in blue, good name A2. That is how the city of Mayflower currently reviewing is at the code hold. Like we did last workshop, trying to compare and contrast to see if there's any want to change. Or do we want to keep what's in the model code? Or do we want to kind of blend back to what we currently have on the books? Trying to reconcile, because right now with the UDO, there's only one agricultural zone. Present that we have two. For a while, we're considering consolidating that one. Having a code hold is not a lot of our basically none of that probably will end up in agricultural.
Really only seeing two differences. Main, I mean, A2 is a minimum of five acres. But a lot of this stuff is just not regulated. The stuff that is regulated, the most significant is a setback, but it's a big freaking farm. I don't know why, I don't know that twenty-five feet would really make that big of a difference.
And so with our A2, again, so we've got that A2 classification handles. But it's not employed anywhere in the city. We have those rural rigs, we have current, not assigned anywhere. So, A2's in play, but it's in theory right now.
I don't even, I mean, I don't even see a purpose for A2.
A2, it was that place owner with the zoning ordinance earlier in the year when I wasn't here. It was, it kind of got ran in. The way it fixes was his signing of his own classification. So, it was a technical correction to provide a minimum of a cent. But A2, we'll get, you know, the greenhouse, the old stove, some areas. That could fall under commercialized and hold hold, but more likely we've been too much by the commercialized and not necessarily have added hold hold in addition.
I mean, it could fall underneath A1 as well, right?
It could, but it is also, you know, given the setbacks and lots in the regulation, doing A1, with their enterprise, I think it might be more appropriate to assign a commercial. Yeah, it's all fair.
Do you think maybe like A1 being more like a farm for a non-commercial use in A2 maybe than being applied to a commercial farm?
Well, so we, what I'm proposing is we consolidate A1 and A2 and merge other changes and let it run in the code. That's what the UDO provides for. I don't want to add a bunch of additional zones, I mean, we're small city. I think we need to kind of keep this simple. And the more we add to, the more complicated it's gonna get, trying to keep that. So, what I would propose is, again, the protocol is the model code. If anybody, we'll look at this and we have issues with the first column. And if we do, then we can make those changes. So, line out A, the first one. One acre minimum. I would almost take A2 out of play because that was just a recent place owner and he's not in effect anymore. Right. So, line out A, no difference, we'll be in there. Line out B, one fifty minimum on a lot lift. Same thing that UDO is providing for. Lot C is the same, lot C, building coverage. Third versus thirty-three to third. So, with that, UDO is gonna shrink in that three percent to the last thirty-three.
I wonder if that, if that's sufficient. I'm thinking of the greenhouses. I'm thinking of all the square footage in their property. And I don't know how expansive the property foot is, but, or footprint is. But those greenhouses, I mean, they're, they're pretty tight in there. And they take up a lot. I wouldn't be surprised if they exceeded thirty percent of their land coverage.
I would say anything will creep off the time.
Right.
So, if we're looking towards the future, I really don't think that A2 zone fits anything that we add in the city.
Wouldn't it affect the property left?
Right, to do it.
To do A, right. So, just the existing, like the greenhouses that we annexed, culversets. They're, they're in the city now, so they're, they're the why we keep bringing them up because we annexed them and they're, they're in this, they're directly impacted by this, so it just keep, and I'm familiar with them, so I just keep using them as an example.
And being so, as we define these commercial corridors, which we haven't touched on necessarily because we've had to step on housing. But as we find these commercials, y'all, we've already had four. You can make some considerations for the uses over there. Because of the fact that that would be commercial use, because they are commercial land properties.
Yeah.
This is kind of geared more toward your traditional home, farm, barn, stuff like that. So, any thoughts? Like I said, UDO's problem, we take three more three percent off our building coverage.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know how many people are gonna get out there and do the measuring and make sure that they're not over thirty but under thirty-three point three.
Perimeter surface coverage, that may as well say a few percent more than a lot. Buildings setbacks saying about liquid front, side setbacks fifteen on each side of the home. Interior coverage is three stacks. Rear setbacks twenty-five, that doesn't change. Property line code is not regulated. Three stories max. That's citywide, that is a critical gap of the books. Anything beyond three stories have to get an exception from the planning permission that's been approved by the city. So, that would manage in the facts. The other structures, same. L and M are not regulated. Building facade is not regulated in agricultural property. Blading windows not regulated. Sidewalks are not required in agricultural property. Pre consistent with this by airfare. We don't currently require that. If they do, ultimately reason that it comes to the vision of whatever they put sidewalks in that time. With the sidewalk, obviously not regulated. Driveway is not regulated. So, I know we just have to sit down in order to acquire it all future residential developments to have concrete for a, I mean, asphalt driveway.
Gotta be paved one way or another.
But that is only in our residential residences. Keep this, it's not regulated, it's not, we don't acquire that zone out. If we keep the model code, we would require agricultural property to pay the driveway. So, before we hang out, you know, the issue is proposed. Some of the driveways can be quite long.
Very expensive to pay and maintain.
Any issues with keeping driveway is? Not in the head, you know. Parking podium, not really applicable. Drive route is not applicable. Driveways sharing, cross access, not regulated. No one will require, it's strictly. So, the next page is kind of a summary of all of those. And if you do the chart and you go to A, U, T, and you give you the map on the front, it kind of shows you to define what was determined, what we're talking about as far as setbacks and sidewalk. The thing, we're not sure exactly what we're talking about, so it's all the employees that took the food. And this may be the recap of everything that we discussed. So, I don't see that we propose any changes from what the UDO is requesting of us with the model code. We agree with any three point three percent reduction in building coverage. So, if I'm hearing that right, we're not going to admit the model code at all. Which is what I said, it is a good strategy.
Correct that.
Like I said, I don't want to get too far off starting in commercial until we've got some more folks here. We've got to have some overall discussions in commercial that's also gonna be a hot topic.
Absolutely. Yes, this equals mine.
You will kind of put a pin in that. Next piece, as I said in last county workshop, I tried to take a temperature group to see how we really perceive. What they're gonna look like, how they're gonna look. And it needs to start here, because ultimately y'all have to make the recommendations in the city. I know the assumption that we would take is partial, a lot of partial. And that is something that we can do, but it's a lot of partials with that.
Yeah.
I say it's, it's impossible. We can sort of do that. But for me, you know, it's kind of the, the first part for me when I'm looking at it from what I have to ask of the good city. It's lucky you go drive. These are residential neighbors. I don't see any, any opportunity, but we're gonna have a focus on anything over here. So, you kind of got this backyard area that runs up to Old Saint Anthony High School, but that's all one lot.
That was your soul, wasn't it?
That, I don't.
I want to say that that was the nine acres, that was just some.
Nine.
Just over, I don't want to say.
Two.
There was somebody came. Yeah, a lady, she inherited it and she came and she went and turned me something on. But we told her she had to sell it and the buyers need to come take less. We told, she wouldn't be selling it commercial in order to satisfy.
I think that would be kind of a hard thing to do, buckle up against a school.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was part of the issue that we had with it. That it was right next to the school. So, there was a total rate, chance of the person who knew buyers could come in.
Yeah, it's only all of them can. Like I said, so we, we got Middle Street, T's off on Old Saint Anthony, wants the school. We got lucky, you go drive. It's probably about over each mountain, I believe. And these three residential corridors. This is for sale currently. We've had several people call, pass over lots of choir about to explain, like cemetery. And again, every time they want to notice the zone, round out their vocal, anything you want to, you're gonna come to our planning permission. It's hard to sell in property. You don't know if you're ever gonna be able to do what you went right with. So, I always feel like the real lies are kind of.
But you almost got. Sure, it's a bitch, okay. Or you want to go commercial?
You're right.
I want, it's only commercial, but you want to go.
So, they've got, obviously performance eighty-nine. I will say it is more than is seen coding portion.
I can't do anything.
So, we may actually get a retirement, I mean, complaints for your location to what I have to do until we assign a residential zone to this. So, we're all on the same page and we've pretty much gone from Snugs all the way to the Youngling lot. And it's kind of a box. Snugs going west, people that jump a mile, that goes up. Look, everything goes south, still all one. And really, everything's south of eighty-nine. For the most part, right now, this is all ag. But when we look at the actual land use on satellite, everything's south of eighty-nine. Say, for all the plumbing, pretty much looking residential use across the way. Need a lot of data. I just got in. South, so we've got that commercial property with all plumbing here. But even as it goes back in the building, it's residential, 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 residential. It shows back in the snugs, all residential, here's residential. So, really, the only commercial properties that are kind of planted, we've all done plumbing. Pen plumbing. Right here. On military. If we if we zone in order to avoid part of the commercial zone, if we zone all of that residential, they may be grandfathered in for.
Uh, anybody that's sure.
Yeah, so if we, if we did a residential, it's not gonna negatively impact.
No, but until this is easier for us.
Yeah, and we don't want to patchwork of zoning and say, "Oh, well, no, my zoning goes to this line." You're five feet over, I mean, you know, the, the stuff that people think about. So, yeah, I mean, it is, it, it, ninety-five percent of this area is residential. And it's not gonna negatively affect the commercial folks that just do the whole area as residential. I don't, I'm not saying anything else commercial. I mean, when you go more self way in caps, I mean, all of this, these are all residential problems. I would, I would think, I would think the goal would be to maintain that going forward. Right. And to protect that corridor as residential.
Yeah.
As we gear up here on the bypass, get all the plumbing. Right on the bypass. So, this is kind of when you start evaluating the commercialized place.
Yeah, north. Or in the bypass, there is a lot of. Well, that was like when, when the bypass was just a, a money trail. When we were up there looking at it, that was kind of the idea that, that hold would, would open up to more commercial. We were trying to weigh that out. That's what we got. The advice from Ted Townell to, some of it all ag, to prevent people from doing like a land brush. And I was having just spotting whatever, because at, at that time, it was a lot of less brushable zone. So, to prevent people from just standing up any kind of whatever, just having to be a mismatch up there. He said, when he was the mayor of Conway, that's what they did when they annexed, just straight, straight ag by the way. That's how they zoned it. Then they went back and started looking at it to, to do a permanent thing, but it prevented a land brush. Prevented people just putting up BS all over.
And like I said, you know, I've got two motives here, Nate. I feel like this is something we need to do to make it clearer for new builders, for new land purchasers, get to know exactly what their lease zone is going for. But secondly, as I'll do here, you know, snugs, essentially a beard here, I can do no go.
We have, of course, we got, we don't want to do anything. We don't want to zone all. We want R two, in case somebody wants to build some dude classes or something.
Well, and, and so, and as, so we're all doing this simultaneously with the model code. So, as a, as a stopgap with the car code, we can say R one. That's what you'd be for if we started looking at like the neighborhood flex. We've got some more dynamic options that are in the model code that we could allow. Versus different options in multi-use denser, denser lives.
Well, when you try to concentrate, you're coming to the same problem that we had last. They're not. So, if you thought in R two, they're all ag because of that.
And, and so, you know, with this, with this stuff, even when we start looking at the model codes, tap all over the area, this is not something that we're just gonna pass. So, I'll, I'll go to church and I'll bring people here, be welcome to say, this is a little pity back from everybody.
Yep.
And they're trying to do our best to reconcile all of this to work from back. But R one is consistent with everything that's over here. R two is not. Insofar as I know, we've got multifamily.
Uh, well. Chad.
They got multifamily, there are different buildings, but there's multiple families on the property. There's these three.
So, and, and your car code, go back to the overall percentage of the land and stuff like that, they're gonna be involved.
Yeah, yeah. No, I was just saying like, we didn't know if there were more, if there were multifamily units over here, and I was just thinking, they're a compound, we always call it a compound.
Well, it's not, it's very true. It's all, it's all there.
What a big dumpster for everybody. Janet Dappy, it's Sean and Nikki.
It is.
Grandparent Cogers, Andy the Wurs. Everybody's smothered on there.
So, uh, all the plumbing there. So, the partials here. All one of them. The largest part of the area is, it's a lot. You know, there couldn't be something where we were, um, it's kind of our transition.
Yeah.
Going, as we continue east, we gotta get off church and really a little bit of property, property in that bypass right now.
And if you like, it's all important, it'll be very important.
So, that, that, this might be, after we, we start that transition, because this is all gonna be all. Where it kind of gets a little technical for me is when going over there. Where it gets a little more complex.
Yeah.
Greenhouses obviously, they're very dense. Got churches here, and we've got all one back here. Like I said, our zone doesn't necessarily have to align with these partial boundaries, right? It's like our overlays, they could, a lot of partials halfway hitting point. But as it sits now, it's got more city buildings right here. And residential, getting hurt. And kind of transition back to residential. I guess the question is, how far do we want that cultural to extend? Do we want to protect all this as residential until we get here on the north side?
For now, we'd say, yeah. If we need to reassess someday in the future. But for now, the majority of that's residential. So, preserve it. If somebody comes in with a commercial design that really want consideration, then we can look at it.
Who have been laying over here. Some of this is gonna be lower, and some of it maybe worth keeping at.
I don't know how much long that, it's not back there.
Where, where, where's your Barbara?
It bags up to homies, acreage that was, used to be mine.
It's all touch here. Well, maybe we'll follow them, same as you love. And so, this is kind of where I was, I was going with, we could protect. It's cool. For taking your money and things, even if some of them don't sell my question. No, so. Put that lot, we just have on the, on the highway, it's a version of everything gone and it's all residential.
He's not nice.
I can't picture that.
He's got the lease on me a lot. He's got the lease on me a lot.
What?
Well, my dead chickens, I used to own the property and the guy who bought it from was a friend of mine. I had sold it too. And I just put my dead chickens over there and feed the coyotes. They called the lease on. Well, my dead chickens, I used to own the property, and the guy who bought it from us, a friend of mine, that had sold it to, and I just put my dead chickens over there, and feed the cows, he's, they called the lease on me for that. They called the lease on me, it's just, yeah, because his fancy.
But, and, and I, I wasn't looking, no other one, I wouldn't want to grow a property in my backyard.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's fair, so having to work within the process. But we know it's a highway, and we know that we could grow, would be your priority, maybe you could narrowly do that, still get your car on a highway.
No, but it sure is a good racetrack for people.
It is.
And you can hear speech, you've done. Yeah, that would want commercial rather than on me.
And I, 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 I agree with you, I mean, that is where Atlanta and Southern. They can be there with them, and they need to expand beyond that point, and we hold over here, it's gonna go through that whole process. If it's a larger site, then they feel, they'll do that, you have, you have your option, go back there, speak to the police, and we go through what we want to do. But these are also very preliminary discussions, but I feel like we do need to go forward with some sense of urgency.
Right.
This, uh, eighty-nine south is more what I'm concerned about right now, just capturing that as all one.
Chris, do you think that you could, before the next planning commission regular meeting, could have that map that we were talking about zoning R one printed out for the commissioners through you, then maybe at the next planning commission meeting, we could go ahead and take action on that and have it ready and queued up for the next city council meeting, to see if they're okay with it, and if they are, then we could have a public hearing, make sure everything's fine, we don't need to take it back, we, at least, I'm, I'm thinking like that from my agile development standpoint. We don't have to wait until it's all done and waterfall it, if, if we get a piece of it done, we could go ahead and move forward on it.
Yeah, I, I'm not the only one just doing everything at one time.
Yeah.
But.
R one.
If we can do that. Everybody that's in it is protected, you know, grandfather deal.
And then we can get into more detail on the north side. Right, that we may have to piecemeal maybe a little more.
And as much as planning, uh, uh, our whole detailed map in this area is more livable.
Okay.
Than the county data looks like. Once I get on with that, we, we can take that partial, by, or we can evaluate.
It's consistent with the adjoining, and everything's all, all the one rounded?
Right, yeah, everything's south to eighty-nine, and we could go ahead and move on that, and that would at least enable you to do your job, uh, in that area, and we could go ahead and get in front of council this month, uh, and if they don't have any changes, then we can have a town, or, or we could have town hall before we have council. I guess it, it, to me, it, it doesn't make a difference, whatever people want. I sit on both bodies, and I don't have a preference for where, I, I guess I kind of almost rather had the, the public hearing first, so that if there are some major changes that the planning commission needs to reassess and reevaluate, they could do that before taking a look to the councils, the council really has to vote on the final draft.
Bring that public hearing in a regular meeting, same time.
Yes, yeah, that's true. That's a good point, too, yeah, if we can get, if we can get, uh, at our regular meeting, we can get that voted on, then we can move it forward, and then I'll bring it up to council, like a regular planning commission proposal, and council can then, um, take any comments from the public, and, uh, and make a decision, send it back to the planning commission for more work, or adopt as presented.
Well, Barbara and I will, we'll double check on the rules and regs tomorrow for public hearings, so, all that. We'll get that information up to you, just make sure we're all the same, babe, we're not missing anything.
Right. Yes.
One, not interstate drive.
So interstate drive, I mean, it's all essentially C four.
It's an explosive area.
The base zone is C four, we've got the R one on the back end. And we're impacted through with the overlays, the overlay supersede our base zone, this is a base zone path.
What did they just put in the ball?
So that's gonna be interstate drive, the overlay, that, that, that's what commercial quarter or center, that's gonna be right here, but that one piece is still C four. As, as our property develops further to the east, that's when the base zone is R one, but it's still in the overlay, so things are already, so that this one and all of them is an old void.
R one.
Now we repeal the overlay, R one comes back into play. Overlay district supersede the URC base zone.
And we're getting rid of that. The U D O will take the place of all that?
Yeah, it, it, this is where it gets.
Stick.
But like I said, the, the interstate drive, that, that overlay, the old doors is narrowly tapered to this area.
So this here.
That's, all of this is new. It used to be here, but that's not what it is. So all this here, like twenty four years. Now this. And then here, it's all wetlands. And that had to be given up in here, in a lower way, build that up, this is a wetland, it's, is that making a big question, what it's on? Well, it may, for this part, would, president more of her, yes, it would make some difference. Because there are hard provisions, interstate drive openly, to have R one, R one type homes, uh, it's just a setback apart, but. I know we amended that, we went through and changed it.
Well, I guess once you get the. This is all my problem. One, this overlay. This overlay.
That's not gonna be the overlay, so this is gonna be base zone for the city, so the C board is gonna be the highway commercial.
Yeah, remember, the overlay's going away. We're gonna rezone all of that area.
Randy, was it you or, um, was Barbara, was that? Your mother? And, and she's the one that wanted that sound of the article last night when I came up here?
Oh, yeah.
I'm coming in the trailer, you are, I was, I think I, she's the one that wanted it, because that's where they did it.
Well, yeah, I don't know what happened, because you know, we ran next. So, you know, we wouldn't amend the city, then we're in next, and then it come, it come, uh, all, all the way we live, everything else is C four, and then overlay there, they say, it's, there's, there are, I don't know what it is. In the blue, it's gonna be the interstate drive.
So if, if I wanted to build another house for my property, I'm gonna have to resite?
Not necessarily. Careful, getting into the weeds. Looking at. As you, if, one thing is documented, it's very detailed, which can't change it. So we've got our scheduled uses for interstate drive, and this is commercial uses. Educational, residential uses, so blue is interstate drive. Home occupations are permitted, single family residential alone, all permitted, single family detached, permitted with conditions, if the law shall be, you know, small, this is the people.
So I can.
Where currently we're doing that. Okay, if you remember, I come before the board a year ago, I was kind of building a home for my boy there, and I didn't do it all across, and so, you know, put it down, send the head of town, and then, of course, I decided not to do it, but I didn't have to do it all that because, well, yeah, so one thing that I pushed through from last month, month before, was to make a law that the overlay district takes part in all getting supersede all of these regulations, so if it's specified, you know, out here, this, 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 this incorporates all of the, the uses that are permissible. So if it's here, you can do it, if it's not, you can't, and that's, that's the law now. There, we don't refer, we don't refer back to the base zone, whether some C fours are relevant, if you're in that shade, we'll do which your property is on this map.
But, is it, you go back, we were just talking about the homes on the interstate drive, and it's saying permitted with conditional use though?
So, no, the, the way that was written, it was conditional use, because remember, we passed the ordinance that amended this piece right here, because it was originally forty feet, we wanted that to be, be consistent with the rest of our residential.
But it's a single family residential attached loading unit town home, and then that belongs to a single family residential attached loading unit.
So, single family detached residential, so that's to the side of home, so originally. It, it, so the conditions are, as you say, forty, say, yeah, you build a home, but your lot can be no greater than forty.
Right.
Well, that's not permitted. Correctly, these not permitted.
Not permitted.
Not permitted.
Can you go over here? Is that the bill?
So it depends on where you talk about a Scotts store, or, so, I mean, that, that was.
Is that permitted or not?
The way it is read right now, I would say no, but that, that's something that was all. But we want to keep it in blue, because that's for interstate drive, that's, that's all we're.
Right, yeah, you, you can put hotel, or. Just about anything.
That, that story you had kind of about Sunday, and I'm like, what the hell?
Yeah, we have a lot.
Oh, the, the studies?
Yeah, he was, I, I remember, and I was at company, and I remember Josh talking about that, yeah, I, I don't think that should be here, but it.
What they did was, yes, you would be able to do that without.
Sure, area down here is kind of like selling anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, not really, we're gonna build a house for kids, we're gonna make it.
I kind of like being myself.
So, give me, give me what you think.
On that close, I have a story on some of that, all the way. I don't know where we were, but I think we kind of come to some consensus here, just to bring it back forward, south eighty-nine, from snugs, from us to, uh, city limits, get everyone south, whole highway to every one, looking for you. Rules and regs to bring up those here forward. Go over there.
Yeah, I like it.
Next meeting, I'll, I'll have some additional comparisons, and we'll start working on commercial, see if that's like, between ball group. That's all I've got.
Well, I guess we actually have city council, I was off on my date, we actually have city council in a week. So. Barbara, will you put that on the, I don't know, can we get, do you think that we can get that together in a week? Have, get out, people can show up to city council and discuss this?
So, I'm gonna be in hand with all of them.
Okay, so we'll put it on next month's agenda.
So we want it on July's city council agenda?
Yeah, and July's planning commission, so we have planning commission on the eighth, so we definitely need to have it then, so that we can vote it out of commission, and then we'll have city council again on July twenty-second, so then that would give us enough time to put it together, a public meeting, people can come to council and discuss it.
You want the planning mission above, and one with zoning, or with the agricultural ban?
Yeah.
And then we want to have the public hearing before the council meeting then, on that issue.
Yes. We're on the maps.
And we probably gotta pull a agenda for this one, you know?
Yeah. Right.
And the city council, they'll, they'll be back, they'll all be back.
What's that?
Our next meeting, they'll all be back.
Oh, I'm sure.
Probably.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yep. Uh, let's see, and then, oh, okay, next week on the twenty-sixth, that's the Gaven Fish Town Hall, so there might be some discussion about that as well at council. Okay, well, with that, then we will adjourn, and, uh, we have, I guess, your date, city council on the twenty-fourth, next week, planning mission, the eighth of July, and the next council after that, be the twenty-second of July. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time, and ma'am, I didn't get your name, what was your name? Oh, you're Mathis, Cynthia Mathias, me and you have been arguing. I, if you got a question, just email me or message me directly, I will answer you. The what? Get the, she hasn't been.
Pre-move, I'm a one-time seller, and you have Patrick do, then I'm a three, three, that's, I mean, he gets that, I love one year.
I, I don't even know how it's still on there, if it's just been held on like gravity. Wow. I guess, man, that. And it is state with as many tornadoes as they get. That's heavy cinder blocks on it, it seems.